You did. You did, actually. But I earned that A.
What were you teaching?
Political administration 101. Yeah. But one of the things that I reflect back on now is how you chose to step aside from the curriculum and teach what was important rather than stay with the curriculum that was advised. And back then, I felt like I didn't get my money's worth. But 20 years later, I know that I got my money's worth because you taught me that stepping outside of the box and not conforming and doing what's right and what's important is the most important thing that we can do, which is what's compelled me to be here tonight. I live at 239 Coney Street in Unit 2, which is the top floor of the main house. It's a two-family Cape Cod building. It's gotta be 100 years old. I don't know, it's gotta be, it's very old. I moved in on January 27th of 2010 after responding to an advertisement placed by Royce Watson on the Internet for this one-bedroom apartment, heat and hot water included, for $5.25 a month. I responded to the ad. He replied. We met in person early January. He drafted a residential rental agreement. Or his attorney, I should say, drafted a residential rental agreement. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I'm gonna be taking some deep breaths. Which requires at-will tenancy only. And if any of you gentlemen are aware of laws, at-will affords the tenant no protection in a forcible entry and detainer action. And I've experienced that personally in the last two months. I currently am facing a writ of possession which can be issued tomorrow. No, is tomorrow Friday? Yes, it can be issued tomorrow. You gentlemen have received the email that I sent to Mr. McCollum. It's very complicated. When I met with Mr. Watson early January to inspect the premises, it was inhabited by Jack Oliverdian, A-L-A-H-V-E-R-D-I-A-N. Apparently Oliverdian was moving out and I moved in on his heels. When I saw the rental agreement and when I saw at-will, I said, "I would like a one-year lease, please." He said, "No. All of my leases are at-will because it's easier to get them out." He says, "And I've got a good attorney who knows how to get them out fast." Well, I was under duress because I was living in my mother's house in a cottage out back that only had electricity and heat, which was just a craft cottage that she built for herself and my daughter. And it wasn't a residence, but that was where I was living because I had no place else to go. So I surrendered to this at-will lease under duress, signed it, gave him a security deposit of $525 divided into two payments. One was on January 10th, the date that I signed the document, and one was on January 26th. I physically inhabited the premises beginning on the 27th of January. When I moved in, Unit 1 below me, which is the entire first floor of the house, was inhabited by Michael N. Selmalina, which is spelled C as in cat, E-L-M-A-L-I-N-A, Selmalina, Paqat, P-A-Q-U-E-T-T-E, and their three-year-old daughter Olivia. One of the very first exchanges that I had with the Paquats was them asking me if I had any ex-boyfriends stalking me or if I had any violent enemies stalking me. And I asked them, "Why?" And she said, "Because Jack Oliverdian, living upstairs in this building, has been a living Screaming, hollering, fighting with his girlfriend, you name it, it's been a living hell." She says, "And we don't want to deal with it again." I said, "I can promise you, you will not have those kinds of problems from me. I'm a survivor of domestic violence. I'm a survivor of family domestic violence. I was also an abuser when my daughter was very little and went to counseling. I am not a negative energy attractor. You don't have to worry about that with me." That was February of 2010. Paquats and I got along beautifully the year or so that we cohabitated in the building. At this time, if any of you are familiar with the history of Augusta, that property historically was a single-family house that the owner, back in the 80s, built an addition on the back, which was a dance studio. It's a one-room dance studio with hardwood floors throughout and only, what size would you say those windows are, Tim?
Two by two maybe.
Two by two, two by two windows at the largest, Jeff, which are above eye level. There's virtually no way to see outside of that building. And there's a small kitchenette on the southern end of that addition with a bathroom. There's no closet space, there's no shelving, there's no partitions, there's an exterior entrance, there's an interior entrance. There was a gentleman living in that unit when I moved in in January 2010, Benjamin He continued to live there throughout the time. The Paquats moved out on March 18th of 2011 because they had the opportunity to move into Selmalina's father's house because he was moving into a nursing home. So they transferred residents simultaneously, which actually, they pushed to happen because the electrical service in this building is unfairly divided. And the way that it's divided currently, there are three meters on the house. When I moved in, there were three units being inhabited, which means that the common areas do not have a separate meter. Factually, the basement, the oil furnace, the sun pump, the cellar lights, the first-floor electricity, everything on the first floor, everything plugged into my living room is all on the Unit 1 electrical bill. I overheard just two weeks ago Jack Oliverdian talking on the telephone about his electrical bill for January 2012, which was $162. His smart meter right now reads 10,200 kilowatt-hours. My meter only climbed four kilowatt-hours in the last five days. His meter climbed 129 kilowatt-hours in the last five days. And I've been taking the readings for the last three days. Royce Watson is fully aware of this illegal division, this illegal division of electrical service. He has been fully aware for the entirety. Royce Watson obtained ownership of this property on April 22nd, 2005. Purchased it from a Burgoyne, I believe. The Paquats were tenants at this building at the time Watson obtained ownership. If I recall correctly, and I may be wrong, my understanding is that Mr. Watson did zero work on this building when he inherited it or when he purchased it. Despite him saying that he had the electrical service completely updated, the circuits replaced, et cetera, et cetera. Well, if that's true, then he would have had to have a licensed electrician to do that job, not only for safety, et cetera, but it needs to be a licensed electrician. And my experience so far has been, on October 27th of 2011, the day after the code enforcement inspection, when Rob Overton discovered no CO2 and illegal smoke detectors in the building, he ordered Watson to have hardwired smoke detectors installed and regulation CO2 detectors installed by a licensed electrician. The person who showed up the next day to do the work was Eric Simpson of Simpson Electric out of Manchester. Very nice guy, very, very professional. I was more than happy with his service. Not only did he install the hard-wired smoke detector, combination CO2 detector, but when he was presented to me at the doorstep by Royce's maintenance person, Bill, I don't know the person's last name, but Bill brought Eric to my doorstep, introduced him to me, and I said, "Well, is he here to fix my kitchen light and my porch light too?" And the maintenance guy looked at me and looked at the electric guy, and the maintenance guy said, "Do everything that needs to be done. Whatever she wants to get done, do it. I don't have any specific orders. I have no idea about anything in the kitchen. Just do what she wants you to do." Okay, then. So one-hour job turned into a six-hour job because the light switch, it's a double, it's a outlet and a light switch.
Groundfall.
Groundfall? Okay. My kitchen sink. It was protruding from the wall when I moved in. And it was protruding in such a way that you could push on the faceplate. And I had to push on the faceplate to make the connection. As you could see from the emails, it said in one of my emails that, one of my complaints in May of 2010 was that when I turned the light on, there was a sizzling noise when the connection was made, and the sizzling continued. It was a constant sizzling until I broke the connection and turned it back off. Well, from February of 2010, when I inhabited the building, until May of 2010, when I made the written complaint, it significantly deteriorated. Just the few rare times that I attempted to use the light, it would sizzle. Oh, shit. All right, turn it off. Can't use that light, you know? The only light I got is my ceiling light. Royce, yeah, 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 all right, fine. No, no, nothing, nothing. Didn't get any response until I wrote him an email. All right, he comes over, he checks, he checks the kitchen, turns it on. Well, it happens to work at that moment for him. Happens to work. Flips it on, it's fine, flips it off. Are you kidding me? You see it's protruding, you see that it's not, you know, you see this, you see there's no groundfall because it wasn't, there was no groundfall at the time, remember? It was just a basic two-outlet with a light switch. It wasn't even fault, it wasn't even grounded. It's like, Royce, no, it's fine, 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 whatever. Well, at that moment, I realized what kind of person I was dealing with. So from that moment on, most communications that I could have with him in writing via email or text message, I have. Just so I could keep a record of it because I know that nobody would believe me unless it was all in writing. I did get behind on my rent in May, just two weeks after, I know what it was. May of 2010, I was having a hard time financially and I was gonna have a hard time in May, and I asked him for a payment arrangement on May 5th of 2010, which he agreed to in writing. I made the written complaint about habitability issues on May 16th of 2010. Because I'm trying to stay within the statute and the laws, you know, because there's, I mean, there's an explicit protocol that you must follow, that a tenant must follow, whether the tenant is an at-will tenant or whether the tenant has a written, rock-solid lease. There's a certain protocol that has to be followed. Is anybody in the room an attorney that's familiar with eviction laws? Anybody here at all? Nobody? Wow. Well, it's a beast of its own color, but anyway. So I was trying to stay within my rights and my responsibilities as a tenant. Because I have responsibilities as well as rights. I have a responsibility to report these things to Mr. Watson as they appear, you know, I mean, holes in the eaves, you know, substandard electricity. When we have these things that happen, if we don't take care of them, everything else deteriorates around it. So I have a responsibility to tell Mr. Watson. Well, Mr. Watson has a responsibility to respond appropriately and immediately in order to fix these problems. Well, he didn't respond. So, May, I sent him a letter, he didn't respond. I just stopped using the light. So in October of 2007, when code enforcement, when I, when-
2007.
I'm sorry, 2011, excuse me. October 26th, 2011, when I went to code enforcement and Mr. Overton observed the smoke detector, et cetera, and when Eric Simpson arrived to do the hard-wired smoke detector, I said, "Would you please fix the kitchen light? Would you please fix the porch light?" And he observed the same thing that I observed, and he's like, "You've been living with this for the past year?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "Do you ever tell Royce?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "I've never seen you before, Eric." I said, "Do you work for Royce typically?" He says, "Yeah, I'm Royce's electrician." I said, "I've never met you before." I said, "Jack's done electrical downstairs, he's had lights." He says, "Yeah, I noticed that I've seen a few light switches off on the side over there." He says, "He's not supposed to be doing that." I said, "Well, why doesn't Royce have you do those things?" He says, "I don't know, he just doesn't call me." I said, "Jeez, okay." So anyway, Eric Simpson fixes the kitchen problem, porch problem, and he hardwires my smoke detector and gives me CO2 detector, does a great job, very happy with him. But it leaves the illegal divisional electricity issue that's still a problem. And the reason that's a problem, gentlemen, is for this purpose. Unit 1 is required in January of 2012, this gentleman, $162 for electrical service for a two-bedroom apartment for one month. If a tenant is unable, if tenant 1 is unable to pay that electrical service, if they lose their, if they lose their electrical power by CMP for non-payment, I also lose. I lose electricity in my living room, which is where I do 90% of my living, my computer, my TV, everything. And partly the reason I'm in my living room most of the time is because Rob Overton gave me explicit instructions repeatedly with Tim Kason witnessing that the bedroom that I'm using is an illegal bedroom. And it's illegal because the entry area, when you walk up the stairs, there's a small entry area, the roof line comes down in such a way that you really have to, you really have to make sure that you don't hit your head on the roof line. And any, any tall people really have a problem in my apartment because of the roof line, because of the ceilings. So what they've transformed into a bedroom is actually an illegal bedroom because of the roof line and the headspace and because of emergency personnel and equipment and whatever. Not to mention no second egress. I have no fire escape. I have no way to get out except to climb out the window onto the roof and perhaps jump 10, 12 feet. But what if I had my granddaughter with me? What if I had my one-year-old baby granddaughter with me? I have no way to get out of that building. What if the fire is in the hallway? Okay? I'm stuck. I understand about grandfathering ordinances and laws and everything else, but let's take particularly the issue about the roof line and the headspace. When Mr. Overton came into the building at 3:00 PM on October 26th with Tim and myself, I had my recorder in my hand, it was not on at the time. He walked up my stairwell, which is a hazard in itself because of its dimensions and whatever, and he said, "Oh, my God. The stairwell's a hazard. Especially this corner, this turn right here, this is not good." He says, "And this, this handrail right here at the top of the stairs, he says, 'Someone would be more likely to trip on the stairwell, hit their head on the railing, and fall back down over the stairway onto the, onto the entry.'" He says, "They're not gonna use that to hold themselves up." This is as soon as he walked into the building. Okay. So he comes up to the top of the stairs, we're standing in the hallway where the smoke detector is, and he's looking around, he's feeling, I can tell he's feeling cramped because he's looking at the headspace around and he's, he says, "This is not okay. No, this is not okay. This, this headspace is, it's not okay." He said other things, but he basically said it was not okay. And he walked through and actually took out a measuring tape and measured from the lowest point of the ceiling in the kitchen to the floor to see if it was regulation also because there's, this partition that dips. So he was taking his measurements. I showed him the gap in the ceiling in the bathroom that leaks water. I showed him the broken kitchen window that's still broken today, that was broken when I moved in in January 2010. He says, "Broken windows, I don't care who broke it, it's gotta be fixed." I said, "Okay, fine." One of the reasons I brought Mr. Overton into my building was because I was having a problem with bugs. Now, I don't know what kind of bugs they are, but I have samples, and I would really like to find a lab to have them tested because they bite me specifically. My cats lived outside for the entire months of June and July, July and August because these bugs were attacking them. Four of these bugs are cat fleas that I specifically took off my cats, four of these are. The rest of the bugs in this bag are, were taken off my body parts, my arm, my leg, my foot, whatever. Each one of these bugs, with the exception of four cat fleas, were taken off me. You see this cat hair in the back. I would love to find a lab to get these tests and find out what they are because I don't know what they are. But as you saw from the email that I sent to you gentlemen this morning, I encountered a bat this morning in my cellar when I went downstairs to take pictures. When I was taking pictures of the extension that's nearest the rear of the cellar, I put my hand on the side of the entryway to the, to the entry and I heard something, sounded like water dribbling or something, I don't know what it was, it was high pitched, something. And I'm looking in the corner there, I'm like, "What is that? What is that?" And there's a piece of like, it's like tool boards, like, you know, gentlemen would use to put, hang their tools on in the garage and stuff. So I, I kinda moved it away from the wall and there's this big black thing hanging off the wall, and I'm looking at it, and I'm looking, and I'm still hearing the screeching and it's getting louder and louder and louder. I'm like, "Why is that?" And it started moving. And it's like, "Oh, my God, that thing's a bat." I pushed the wall, I pushed the board back on, on top of it, and I really held it there. It's like, "Oh, shit." Excuse my French. "Oh, my God, I gotta get out of here." So I got out of the basement as quick as I could, but my, my point is, gentlemen, that my understanding from my research is if these bugs are fleas, which Royce Watson has accused me of bringing into the building by my cats, he's accused me in emails of causing the flea problem, but if these are fleas, number one, cat fleas, specific cat fleas don't bite humans unless there's no cats, no other animals to bite. That's their behavior, that's, we all know that. However, we've got sand fleas, we've got bat fleas, we've got, I don't know how many different species or genus of fleas, if these are even fleas. Now, since Jack Oliverdian moved into the building on September 1st of 2011, there's a gap of time, I'll talk, talk in a second, but when he moved in September 1st, 2011, I have been able to overhear many telephone conversations that he's had with, with friends as well as in-person visitations that he's had with friends because it appears that there's either lacking or no insulation at all between the floors and his ceiling. He has a suspended drop ceiling in his kitchen. And the walls amplify the music as evidenced by the numerous police reports that I've made since September 1st about loud music and disturbances, but I've been able to overhear Jack Oliverdian screaming about bugs in his build, in his unit, I mean, screaming about bugs. In the last two months, I've personally observed and taken photos, photos at least once of a gentleman who appears to be from the military walking into Jack's, built into Jack's apartment with what appears to be a pesticide canister. It's a tall canister, about this long, cylindrical, and it's got nozzle, and it's got a hose that's come, that comes off, and it's got a sprayer on the end. I've seen him at least three times in the last two months walking into Jack's apartment. And since I've discovered my ability to overhear Jack's conversations, I've actually made a point to overhear Jack's conversations. I've actually stopped my activities and interrupted my life in order to overhear what's going on downstairs so I can keep up on what's going on downstairs. My understanding is the pesticide canister contained an herbal pesticide, some kind of an organic, non-toxic, you know, remedy that he was attempting to use because Royce was avoiding him also. I can't count how many emails I've sent to Royce about bugs. I can't count how many text messages I've sent about bugs. The last willing communication that Royce Watson had with me of his own accord was on September 19th, 2011, when he said, "I'm about done with the flea issue." And then I said, "I'd like to be done with the flea issue too, but Mother Nature has other ideas." I said, "I did not cause this problem. Don't make it into something bigger than it already is." And his last words were, "I know." So last thing he said to me on September 19th, okay? Since September 19th, he has refused to speak with me. He will not answer his phone when he sees my number. When I call his house, his wife answers. He will not speak with me. I was hostage in my yard for more than a day on November 23rd, the day before, the day before, the day before Thanksgiving, because I had banking I needed to do before Thanksgiving, and I had one more day to do my banking, and I couldn't do it because Royce didn't remove the snow in that snowstorm that we had. I was hostage in my yard because of 12 inches of snow, I couldn't leave. And he did it maliciously. Jack Oliverdian believes that these are bedbugs. He has said repeatedly on phone conversations, friends, that these are bedbugs. I personally have never, ever had a bedbug in my house in my entire life. I'm 43 years old. I've never seen a bedbug. I sent actually an email to city code enforcement, Rob Overton, it was, it was, the subject line was lawful notice, bedbugs, because I'd never seen one, and I found a bug on me that day that I'd never seen before. And I took a photo of it, and I sent a copy of that to Rob Overton. It was a poor photo, but, and I was so freaked out by the bug that I squished it and I destroyed it. But Rob Overton independently determined that it was not a bedbug by the picture that I gave him. So he dismissed any kind of lawful notice that I gave Royce Watson to act within five days according to, you know, the statutes. So, you know, I don't know what these bugs are, gentlemen, but Jack Oliverdian just left the building on February 10th as a direct result of no less than three things. The active oil leak in the basement, the mold issue that's occurring because of the substantial amount of water that's always coming into the basement, and the bug issue. Royce Watson and Jack Oliverdian used to be agents, they used to be partners, and Jack used to call Royce his buddy. And Jack actually has lived in numerous different buildings that Royce has either owned or managed or broken. And my understanding from overhearing Jack's conversations is that Royce forced him out of Melville Street and forced him to move into Coney Street. Now, I've had problems with Jack from the very moment I met the man, September 1st. No, I met the man the day before when Royce introduced him to me. And the next day when he tried to move in, he was gonna turn, he was gonna set off a flea bomb, a flea bomb in his Unit 1 while I was in the building. He said, "You got 30 minutes to get out. I'm gonna turn off this bomb in 30 minutes." And I'm like, "No, you're not." He said, "Yes, I am." And I said, "No, you're not." He says, "Yes, I am." And I said, "If you do, I'll call the police." Well, the only thing that saved me that day was Royce gave him the wrong key and he couldn't get into the building. And he had to call Royce to get him into the building. And when Roy showed up, I told Royce, I said, "You get him out of here and you get him out of here today. He's a threat, he's a hazard, he does not respect my need to be safe. If he had the right key, he would have done what he threatened to do. He would have set that bomb off with me in that house. You need to move him out." I sent Royce an email and a hand, and a hand-delivered notice of dangerous tenant. No, I, I sent him a notice, unfair trade practices, request for relief from cellar pursuant to Title V, unfair and deceptive trade practices, telling him that he needed to fix these problems with the basement, with the water, with the oil tank. Well, we're here today because of the oil tank, because that seems to be the serious issue today is the oil tank. And that occurred as a result of me fighting bugs in my building- And that occurred as a result of me fighting bugs in my building. I met Tim on July thirty-first of two thousand and eleven, we're in the same study group. He and I met in person July thirty-first, and he was attacked personally by bugs the entire month of August, the entire month of September, um, at which time I borrowed his Hyla, H-Y-L-A, water basin vacuum cleaner, very high-powered vacuum cleaner, at least three times within August and September, in order to try to eradicate the bugs from my unit. I believe he also witnessed, I can't speak for him, but I, I used, I used diatomaceous earth. If any of you are familiar, it's a very, it's an organic, like, like, um, a very fine earth powder. It's, it's a non-toxic, very earth, organic. I tried to use that, I mean, I just strewn it throughout my, my place, because I have hardwood floors, there's no carpeting in my place, all hardwood floors, aluminum. So, I put diatomaceous earth all through my house. My cats lived outside. I mean, when they come up over the stairs, they come binding up over the stairs, jumping on the furniture, trying to stay off the floor. Well, I've got pictures, I can't tell you how many pictures, well, right here. I can, absolutely. September twenty-eighth, we discovered the oil leak. We just, we, we, um, Jack Oliverian had to let us into unit one to let us into the basement. We went into the basement to do a health inspection, a safety inspection, because Mr., Mr. Kason is a remodeling contractor, so I trusted his knowledge. So, we went into the basement, he noticed the oil tank, the pictures you got today are similar to what we saw in September. We told Jack. We left, it was around two-thirty, three o'clock in the afternoon, twenty-eighth. I went home, Tim left. I went back downstairs for the specific purpose of asking Mr. Oliverian if he had already called Royce. He said, "Yes." I, because I was gonna ask him not to call Royce yet, um, because I wanted him to do it in writing, but he'd already called him. But anyway, he said, "Yes, I did." I said, "Well, what did he say?" And Royce, and he said, "Royce told me never to let you in the basement again." "Oh, okay, would you please put it in writing?" "Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll do that, okay, okay, great, 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 great." So, we discovered a sewer leak from the toilet also while we were doing inspection. So, I went upstairs, the next morning, he comes up, fixes the toilet, tells me, "Um, I talked with my son last night, and I'm not gonna help you, because I've witnessed Royce retaliating against people complaining before, he's evicted people before, he's gonna do it again. I, you know, my son reminded me that I can't afford to lose my home, I really need to shut up." I said, "You can't, you're involved now." He says, "I don't wanna be involved." I said, "Well, I'm sorry, you don't have a choice." Anyway, that was September twenty-ninth at ten-thirty in the morning. September thirtieth, I was issued a notice to quit. Royce Watson issued a notice to quit against me. Thirty days notice to quit, no cause, because I'm an at-will tenant, I have no defenses. Okay? I currently am waiting on a writ of possession as a direct result of reporting the oil leak. September thirtieth, I was sent a notice to quit. October third, I filed a complaint online at the EPA's complaint, no response from EPA. October tenth, I was watching, I was sitting at my computer, I saw JNS Oil pull into the yard. I ran downstairs, talking to Tim on Skype, I ran downstairs, I told the driver Joe, he was two people, Joe and a young guy, I told Joe, "The tank needs to be inspected, you cannot fill this tank, I need you to get an inspection." He's, "Okay, I won't, I won't fill it, we'll have to wait." He says, "I'll call the office." I said, "Great." He gets on his phone before I even go back upstairs, he gets in the truck, they leave. My understanding is, he called JNS Oil immediately, JNS Oil immediately called Royce Watson, this is October tenth at ten-thirty in the morning. My understanding, Royce Watson told JNS, "I've already inspected the tank, it's fine." JNS is hands-a-tied. Laura, the manager, from my understanding, says she cannot do anything unless she's given permission. Okay. October tenth. October thirteenth, Mr. Kason calls JNS to see if we can get any kind of response. That's what we got for a response. Which is what led me up to going to code enforcement on October twenty-sixth, because for the next thirteen days, I was trying to figure out what to do, what to do, what to do, who do I call? October twenty-sixth, me and Tim went to code enforcement to, to complain about the bugs, the cracks in the foundation, which are allowing the water to come in. Fire department had to respond, nine-one-one call by me on April seventeenth of two thousand and eleven for carbon monoxide and flooding in the basement, there was more than two feet of water in the basement when the fire department showed up, which smothered the oil furnace, which was still electrified, and sending carbon monoxide through the building. I was the only person on the property at the time. At that moment, four seventeen, two thousand and eleven, there were no CO2 detectors anywhere on the property. I don't know how long I was exposed to CO2, because of the cracked foundation, which allows water into the basement, which smothers the oil tank, the oil furnace. So, October twenty-sixth rolls around, Rob Overton comes, inspects the building, he goes up into my apartment, we're talking about the headspace, he's talking about the headspace being illegal, about my bedroom being illegal, can't even use this, my unit as a one-bedroom apartment, because the bedroom is illegal. He said to me many, many times, "You cannot sleep in that, in that room. You cannot sleep in that room. You need to not sleep in that room, you can only use it for storage." "Okay, fine, who owns this building, Gina?" "Royce Watson." "Oh." "What do you mean, oh?" He says, "Well, Royce and I have owned several, the same properties at different times, actually." He says, "You know, I, I've owned properties and it's transferred to Royce's ownership, and..." "Oh, really? Oh, no kidding, hm. Well, can I record you?" "Well, if you record me, my comments are gonna be vague." "Well, in that case, Rob, then you're gonna agree that my witness here is going to confirm and corroborate everything that happens and everything you say today." "Okay, great, thank you." So, we continue with our inspection. We talked about Royce, and Rob says, "I own property too, and just like Royce, I own real estate for the primary purpose of making money first and taking care of the tenant's needs second." Wow, that was really disturbing. That really disturbed me that day. And it was at that moment that his entire attitude and demeanor changed. His passion about the illegality of the headspace completely flip-flopped. He, it was still, he, he still played the game with me, because he'd already spoken the words, he'd already rung the bell, he'd already let the genie out of the bottle, and he knows with me that I wasn't gonna let go of it, so he couldn't let go of it. But we went outside, we inspected the property, I showed him this big trash, this big tarp, which is still sitting there, that's got, at least right now, at this moment, two trash bags full of clothes, which I took pictures of today. At that moment, when Rob was there in October of two thousand and eleven, there were four trash bags under that blue tarp, blue waterproof tarp, which were clothing. I also showed him a can of flea spray outside. He ignored it. I need help getting an inspection. Okay, I just, I, I need help getting an inspection. Royce Watson refuses to replace the tank. DEP came on October twenty-sixth, after, after Rob Overton left. She, he called DEP. DEP came, DEP ordered, ordered, um, recommended that the oil tank be replaced, did not order it to be replaced. Royce Watson has refused to replace the oil tank, has refused to listen to code enforcement, has not fixed the broken kitchen window in my, in my kitchen, is violating ordinances as well as statutes and safety, safety codes. Um, and it's, and instead of fixing lawfully what he's supposed to be fixing as, as a real estate agent and landlord and building owner, he's now retaliating against me by trying to move me out of the building, so that he can move two more people into the house, who won't complain. So, I'm facing a writ of possession tomorrow. And if I get evicted, I don't know what's gonna happen. Thank you. I apologize for taking so much time.